Morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, April 24, 2025. We all please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we're here for a work session. First topic we have this morning will be matters surrounding possible change to Chapter 211, Beach and Parking Lot Hours and Beach Entertainment. And that will be put on by Councilman Lewoski and Ray Coyne from the Recreation Department, and Ashley King.
Good morning. Mark and Shawnee will come up.
I'll give you one of these just kind of, you can see what we're talking about with the...
Hey, the Mayor of Jamesport, how are you?
I thought I was the Mayor of Jamesport.
You're the Mayor of Rattler.
I got replaced.
You guys are playing pickleball to it.
He was the rec...
Oh, yeah. She wanted to get that.
Yes, she did.
Mark, how are you?
Good, how are you? Nice to see you.
Thank you.
So I have invited up Sean Egan, who is on the Committee for East Creek Marina. And Mark, you're gonna have to say your last name because I know I'm gonna slaughter it.
I have trouble with it too.
I know, I know.
Al Haddas.
Thank you. Who is the Chair from the Beach Committee. So we're going to be discussing, as the Supervisor said, the beach and parking lot hours and possible entertainment at South Jamesport Beach. So, Ray?
What's like the hours? Okay. What happened was, and I gave everybody a sheet, this should be one online, was that we had an old code in the book called Chapter 48, and that's referenced in the top here. And for many, many years, Chapter 48A was beaches were open from sunrise to 10:00 p.m. That was repealed several, several years ago. And the new language, because what they were trying to do was to put the all hours and things on the code to the Town Board via resolution. So the language was, "The Town Board by resolution shall establish the hours and period of time for a public bathing beach, recreation, park, playground, or dog park shall be open. The town reserves the right to limit or extend hours for town-sponsored and/or approved programs and emergencies." So the code was changed from Chapter 48 to now Chapter 211, same topic, beaches and recreation. But the language is just a little bit different and it's a little confusing. And I know Chief Frost is here, and that's where we started the discussion. So Chapter 211, 21A, says, "The Town Board by resolution shall establish the hours and period of time, public bathing beach, recreation center, park, playground, and dog park shall be open." And then Letter B states, "All parks and recreation centers shall be open between the hours of sunrise and sunset unless a town sanctioned program is in progress." So in our department, we were always still going by the 10 o'clock. But I know that caused confusion with the police and the courts, so I brought it to the Supervisor's attention, and now we're bringing it to the Board's attention, that we just want to just make it clear so everybody's on the same page. I don't know if Chief Frost...
Well, it was brought up to us by people who reside by the North Shore beaches, that they went to the code and they saw the sunset. It normally always was the 10 o'clock, 10:00 p.m. So that, we just want clarity on where we're going, moving forward, basically, because obviously the residents are gonna come in and they're gonna say, "Well, it says it closes at sunset." It says the facility closes, but not specifically the parking lot. So that's what the issue was.
Yeah. And the jump on top of that, what we do in the Recreation Department is we issue fishing permits to fishermen with the proper license at 10 o'clock. So the fishermen are allowed to come in the parking lot at 10 o'clock. So everything kind of fell in order, but then just, like you said, it's just the interpretation of the language that is, I guess, confusing everybody.
Well, also for writing summonses, it's a lot easier to know a time rather than sunrise or sunset.
Yeah.
Because that changes all the time.
Every day.
People could argue and say, "Oh, the sun was still up," you know. So to alleviate that, I think we're better off going to a time period.
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, my recommendation, just because we started to take some signs down and then we said, "Let's stop," because we brought it to the Beach Committee, and Mark, why don't you...
Yeah, well, the Beach Committee was absolutely unanimous in thinking the sunrise-to-sunset thing is a terrible idea. For one thing, it would literally establish a time of nobody being allowed in the parking lot between sunset and 10:00, which is just an absurdity. And the next thing is the North Shore beaches, they really are sunset beaches. So people stay for sunset, the vast majority of people, and they'll stay an hour after sunset, you know, saying goodbye. So, you know, it was gonna be, it was gonna be a nightmare.
My family, my family goes away to the river to the beach, you know, the other afternoon. So...
I mean, if there was no parking, like until 3:00, I don't think you'd get any complaints. It's really after, now everybody comes at 3:00.
So the way I see it, and unless I'm wrong, I could put in a resolution stating the fact, one, the operational hours of the beach for the lifeguards from 11:00 to 6:00, which we do every year, but then putting the old code where beaches are open from sunrise to 10: in another resolution, I'll talk to the Town Attorney on how to do it.
Yeah, it should go into the parking, it probably should go into the parking section.
The parking section, okay.
Where permitting is needed for the facilities, it probably should be in there somewhere. You have to talk to the Town Attorney on where to put it.
Okay. And I wanted to get it in because the beaches are gonna open next month, and we only have two Town Board meetings, so I wanted to try to get it in, if not tomorrow, then the next Town Board meeting.
Did you have the signs made, correct? Or straightened out?
We had the signs out, we definitely now replaced some of them that we took down, but we wanna make sure all the, we're putting up all the signs down, and everything's uniform, so we wanted to get permission from the Town Code to do that first.
We don't wanna set it for like 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the parking lot, rather than using sunrise?
I agree.
That would be up to you. I mean, I don't...
I think that's a more cut and dry...
Okay.
And on this, on the standard hour, it says, "All parks and recreation centers." What's a recreation center? Because that says you'll be open from sunrise to sunset.
Yeah, good.
I don't know if it actually meant like the building, like we were open.
That's a little confusing the way it's worded.
I agree.
You know, unless you define what a recreation center is.
Well, we don't really have to.
We have G Y C C, and that's it, and that's, we have town sanctioned programs after that. But yeah, I agree with you, that it is, it's up for interpretation. So maybe, I'll talk to the Town Attorney to see how we can maybe word that a little bit better too with the resolution.
How we doing? This is just kind of up to police discretion, but I can tell you, I actually enjoyed, it was last summer, like 2:30 in the morning, we had over 100 people waiting for a beach for the Northern Lights, and I know that was like throughout, you know, all the North Shore, because it was a credible thing. I mean, the beaches were full at 2:30 in the morning, everybody using their cameras, taking pictures. I know also you do get, every middle August, you get the, the, the call of the meteor showers and everything up there, and people, you know, like to sit on the beach and watch the meteor showers. It's not like, so how do we use our judgment on things like that as well? I mean, you can say you can't go to the beach to watch a meteor shower at night in August?
If I can make a suggestion, the language that says the Town Board has the right to set the hours makes sense to me. And it also includes, in the original version, the right to extend the hours for a sponsored or approved program. So I think, you know, that gives the Town Board massive discretion. We know when those meteor showers come away as a star watcher, so I'm always reminded. So they're predictable. So I mean, I think that that would give you the discretion to let the police force know, oh, this is, it's okay tonight.
They have to close, because what happens is the youth in the area use the parking lots, then go onto the beach and have, you know, unsanctioned parties, and that gives us a tool to get them out of that most of the times. So that's been historically what it is.
But the Northern Lights are, maybe not the meteor showers, there's a lot of meteor showers, but the Northern Lights are such a rare thing, maybe that's enough...
So is that simply done, can that be done by the Supervisor in a press release or something like that?
Well, it can be done by, yeah, by the Board approving that we would extend if the Northern Lights were on August 12th, you know, we could extend the hours that night.
You could make it like a recreation event.
The PD wouldn't go down and issue summonses if, you know, that was the case.
So you have all parks closed, right? All parks...
Oh, I know.
That's the problem.
Unless there's something going on, like baseball games and any of that, you have stuff booked till 9:00. So if stuff's going on, then...
Yeah, if you have a double header.
The lights are on and everything, so you'd know.
How does that affect the boat ramp and so forth, being used to the early fishermen going out there at 4:30, 5:00 in the morning getting out?
The fishing permit, they would have to have the fishing permit. They can have it from 10:00 o'clock all the way, all night. So it's $10, just come to our office and get it. You do it online as well.
The boat ramp permit is separate, so...
Yeah, that's a separate one.
So when you go to launch it, we'll use East Creek, you have a launching permit, so that launching permit allows you to stay past 10:00.
Right. That's 24 hours open with the ramp. So once you have that permit, you're fine.
That's what, you know, this fishing, going out there 4:00 in the morning to get to where they wanna be, or something.
Okay, can we move on to the next part? Are we good with the hours?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm heading back.
So, entertainment at South Jamesport Beach. I am a resident of Jamesport. I live a stone's throw from South Jamesport Beach. And over the years, I have heard people always say, "Why can't we have some type of music, a little entertainment down at the beach?" We do have the Marina there, the East Creek Marina. I am not talking about a band per se, loud, obnoxious music. I'm talking about, you know, a person or two coming up with a guitar and being able to sing from 5 to 8, six times during the summer, from May to September. Figure one at the end of, towards the end of May, two in June, two in July, uh, two in, yeah, two in June, two in July, maybe one in August, because it gets so, so hot around there. I haven't exactly nailed down the dates yet, but I did send over a picture just in this morning of South Jamesport Beach, but I don't think that he got that. So I can't show it, but we do have the concession stand is open at the beach now. That opened last year, and it was extremely successful and received very well by the participants that were down at the beach, and they are coming back again this year. And it would just be nice to be able to have something for the residents to go. You will have to have a beach permit to go, it's for Riverhead residents. I know that there's a concern about the bathrooms, there are bathrooms there for the general public, that they would be able to use that. We're going to have to seal that up a little bit because we don't want people using the bathrooms on the Marina side. That's specifically for the Marina and their guests. But I do have, again, Sean Egan here from East Creek Marina, and Mark from Beaches. So Mark, I know that we have discussed this during our meetings.
We discussed it at both the March and April meeting. It was completely approved, and it was actually documented in the minutes. Everybody loved the idea for South Jamesport. There was like a little concern that we don't want Woodstock, but certainly, sorry. And maybe not, you know, so it's within reason, and those hours sound great. And I just reached out again to the representatives of South Jamesport on the Beach Committee and got a big thumbs up. So I think there's no problem from the Beach point of view, Beach Committee point of view.
I have one question. Why are you limiting it to six times? I mean, it sounds like if it works, why not...
Well, we wanna see if it works. We wanna unveil it and see how it goes, see how the residents react to it. You know, I don't wanna throw it all out there. There's another factor to this that we had, I was thinking about and just wanna see how it is received by everyone else, to lift the ban on, restriction on alcohol during the time that the music is playing, where people are able to have a glass of wine, a glass of wine, you know, if they're enjoying themselves, enjoying the music, because alcohol is prohibited as of now under our code down at the beach. So I think that it would be nice, it's very expensive for people to go out and enjoy the outdoors, to go to a vineyard or a brewery, or, you know, we have a jewel right here in Riverhead, and I think that we're missing a great opportunity for the residents to be able to enjoy more of what we have here to offer. So, I mean, even people that are at the Marina, if, you know, you're on your boat, you're having a glass of wine, you wanna come listen to the music, at least you can bring it with you to watch the music. So I don't know how you feel, the Marina might feel about that.
I don't think anybody would be opposed to so much of the alcohol portion. First off, I just think it's fair to say that every other town does an event like this. So if you look at Greenport, they do the maritime. Cup Squawk Beach does it, Mashut does it, Mashut's done it for years. I just think if it's done, like you said, in a pilot program, I start, nobody's gonna object to it, or there may be some objections, but I don't think there's gonna be overly, highly concerned about it. I think it was a small venue, with a small band, like you said, it's not a big band. I don't think the local residents complain, they'll welcome it, it's a place to go. There's so many places that boaters and other community people like to go to the beaches, and like you said, whether you're in Waiting River to watch, you know, the Northern Lights, or you wanna come to Jamesport and watch the sunset. We don't have anything, there's no entertainment at the beach, and I think it's, we as a town have underutilized our beaches in that aspect for years. So I think that as long as we can control the parking, we can control the alcohol sale, where the music is gonna be, I don't see it as being detrimental. And to start a pilot program, I would be bonded. And the people that I've spoken to, they're not opposed to it. Their only concern was, like I told you earlier, with some people at the bathrooms for the East Creek and how they're gonna use it.
Correct.
Because of timeframes, how they're gonna get in the bathrooms. That was probably the biggest concern in the parking.
I'd like to just add, I'm personally not against the alcohol idea, but it is worth saying that we did not discuss that at the Beach Committee.
No, did not.
Yeah, so that's, so I can't...
Right. That's why I just, I retracted that and said, "Bye."
Again, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't, I can't speak for the Beach Committee.
So I have a question. Have you guys at all explored, like, if there was a crab crack or a lobster bait, you know, during those hours as well, like that kind of thing?
I think pilot program is, yeah, it's probably the operative word.
So I don't know if you've ever been to, Mashut does, like a Tuesday night or Wednesday night lobster night, pasta night, they have all different, although they have food there. And I think, I've talked to the vendor that is currently on the lease, and he expressed trying to do that, bring like a lobster roll, he's known for a lobster roll. So he wanted to bring his lobster roll to the venue, be able to sell that while you're sitting there listening to music. So I think when you bring in the food part, and the alcohol thing, so it's not just you're sitting there listening, you're, these people go in there as a destination, have like a light meal on a summer evening and have a beverage or two when you go home.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I, you know, personally, but you, the Beach Committee hasn't discussed lobster rolls?
Um, no, well, there's already a food vendor there, which the Beach Committee is very in favor of. So it's already, that's...
Yeah, the vendor's already established, and he's already on the contract. He's looking, I think what he's looking to do is trying to expand a little bit, bring music and bring more customers there and be able to provide entertainment for me.
I think it's great.
And to make that business viable, I have a feeling this music will help it, so, or help them. So it's a good thing, like, say, okay, people seem to like that beach, they like the, having the vendor, now the vendor has a more chance to make a couple bucks, so.
I just wanna say one thing, and I mentioned this to Councilman Lewoski, we tried this in 2019, or 2020. We went down there, we had a whole plan, and the Civic, it was a hot button with the South Jamesport Civic Association. I went to meet them and they beat me up till I ran out of there. But I think it's just perception, and I think that's what we have to put down there, because we're all for it. The perception was that kids are gonna be down there, they're gonna be drinking alcohol, and they're gonna be driving drunk and things like that. And our thing was an acoustic with wine, but it was just a hot button issue. So I just wanna make the Town Board aware of that. I think it's a great idea, and the beach is needed, it's beautiful at sunset, but that did become an issue back then.
Well, this is a little bit different because I believe that the suggestion was that there would be music every single weekend, and the fear was that it was going to turn into Mashut, which Mashut is wonderful, if that's what you're into over, you know, on the South Fork. This is not a Mashut thing, this is, this is extremely laid back.
Oh, I agree. I agree 100%. I just wanted to, just, they will come at you, and I'm sure you're still confused about it.
Well, if you characterize it as...
Sorry. The Mashut, the house is a farther away from, like, Jamesport, everything's tighter, so you couldn't have a big band like you have in Mashut or anything.
No, and if the speakers are going in the right direction too, you know, aim them towards the house, and it's just gonna be light acoustical music. And being a pilot program, I think it's worth giving it a try.
Doesn't work, doesn't work.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We can stop it at any time, but I think, I think it's a great idea, and a lot of people do go to the beaches in the evening, and we should offer something for the evening folks to go down there.
You're always hungry when you get up to your boat, I know that. Right?
Yeah. I would just say, for the bathroom issue and all that, we host the movie on the beach at South Jamesport every summer, so that hasn't been an issue, and the parking and all that, like, that's a bigger event probably than just music occasionally at night, so I don't think that would be an issue. And I'd say as far as alcohol, I don't know if I would go with bring your own, because then that's where there's no limit on anything, but perhaps, and I don't know the rules on this, but to get a local vendor, we have so many breweries and wineries, if someone, they do it all on Live on 25, have their tent of, maybe that's the vendor that's there for the night, get local companies, and then you're kind of restricted on, okay, maybe you got two tickets and you can get two beers, or whatever you wanna do. But just a thought.
Thank you. I will actually speak with the Town Attorney about it, I just kind of wanted to bring it for discussion to, you know, the Board, and just see what the feel was in the room for it, and take it from there.
Go do that re-speech thing, right?
No.
Iron Pier is another great location for it.
Yeah.
You're right, absolutely right.
Nothing like the sunset here at the beach.
Because Iron Pier has a lot less, you know, residents around it, so that's...
Think of the pavilion area.
But it doesn't have a food vendor, yet.
But, yeah, they had one.
Yeah, but it's such a small space, it's hard to make it viable, yeah.
Iron Pier's a good place to...
We did discuss the wine at Iron Pier.
We did?
Yeah.
Bad, bad minute taking. I need a new secretary. I'm the secretary as well, apparently. By default.
Well, I thank you very much for coming out this morning. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks for coming in.
Good seeing you.
You too.
And thank you for your support.
Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding New York State Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant with Liz Keller.
Good morning. Liz, how are you?
I'm great.
Good.
Still, I don't know if you have this in front of you, it was an attachment, but it was very small, and if you wanted better copies, I do have them.
Okay.
Okay?
It was really... Yeah, Liz. I know, I was looking at it.
I got you guys.
Thank you.
We both, oh, sorry.
Oh, you're all right?
No, we're gonna pull it together.
Okay.
So, this is pretty straightforward. Governor Hochul has this new unplug-and-play initiative, so as a result, there are parks and rec grants. So there's a municipal parks and recreation grant that we are eligible for through the state, and it's, we could be awarded up to $1 million, and there's 10% match ask. So we do have that money that we'd be able to put toward it through allocating to the budget money. So I'm just asking if this is okay with you? We'd like to put it toward the adaptive playground downtown.
That's a big yes for me.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very simple. I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with us, you know, gearing the grant towards the adaptive playground, and just to reassure you that the match money's available.
I mean, you know, just what I heard about Iron Pier and how it doesn't have concession, I would like to see, I would like to see what other playgrounds need things and beaches, and I would like to see some of that money go to Iron Pier to do a proper concession, because I'm aware of how small that room is, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I started working there.
The closet, yeah.
It's where my career at the town originated.
We have millions of dollars going to the town square, and we have a big town, and I would also like to hear from the Rec Department what they need in other parks.
I did speak to the Rec Department initially, and we had looked to replace or install lights at Veterans Park, but what happened was we wound up getting a quote from Ken, and it wasn't matchable. This is available and matchable and applicable to this application right now, and we could be awarded anywhere up to $1 million, so we're not exactly sure what we would even get. So it would be a really good supplemental way to, I don't know, ensure that the playground's good to go. I do understand what you're saying completely, but the May 2nd deadline puts us in a smidge of a crunch. So the application is two quarters of the way done. I had started with the lights that didn't pan out. We spoke about potential other projects.
How about Bayberry needing the paving? I mean, there's so many parks that need help, and we've got millions of dollars going downtown, and I'm not, I'm for looking at the aggregate of the parks and what they need and, you know, what's in dire need.
And we've met with Ray over the past three years, and the people of Waiting River have wanted like handicap accessible, you know, park equipment swings and things over there, and they've never come to fruition. There are things even in Waiting River Beach that need to be restored, repaired, to make things more handicap accessible.
Okay.
And stuff in there, and we've just, it's never removed on that, and we've been asking for a couple years, so I, for something like this, I would love for you to try to include things on the west side of town as well, with some, something for Bayberry Park, Police Officers Memorial Park. I was there for Earth Day, and Troop 94 did an awesome job cleaning the whole park, they went around and collected all the litter and everything, they did a great job, it was a great event, thank you to Troop 94. But just pulling in there, the parking lot is atrocious, it is so badly done, and like, and just year after year, we just go, so would that be something that could qualify to restore the parking lot there?
Potentially. The only thing that concerns me is the timeframe, because this type of application, it's a consolidated funding application, it requires, you know, letters of support from governments, it requires letters of support from the community, and while I'm sure that we would be able to get all of those things, it's just a matter of time for where we would have to draw from them.
Well, I know that Drew did the cost analysis for the replacement of the parking lot, I'll write you a letter today if you want some...
It's something I'd have to speak to Dawn about, I can't make that type of decision. I was just sent down to present that this is a plug-and-play, because we had initially been going in one direction, and there was, typically the CFA is due like in July, so you'd have more time, but for some reason, this grant was announced at the end of March, I found it, brought it to Dawn, and it has a quicker turnover. So we had tried for that initial project and it didn't pan out, so I had to switch gears mid-grant. So this seemed like the most accessible place to kind of put the money because of the application process.
My only concern, I mean, I had, I understand the timing, I really do, and I appreciate that you went for the lights. My concern is that, then you started the process for downtown, and this, I wish that we could have been approached a little bit earlier to, you know, and I know you're aware of the conditions of parks.
Absolutely, that's my own department. I was just trying to get this to work session and get it moving. I can speak to Dawn about changing gears, and I can push, but I'm not sure where that's gonna come from, so I guess ultimately you'll just have to let me know what you'd like me to do, and I'm happy to try for whatever you have.
I'll also just bring out, we just did the bathrooms up at Veterans Memorial Park, they should be opening up this week, but in order for them to do that septic, they tore up the entire, you know, a good portion of the bike trail.
Oh, that's right.
So the bike trail is destroyed up there, and we met with Ken Tester yesterday morning, and there is no funding to restore the bike trail, so that's a big concern. And, you know, we did allocate, we did a resolution the other day to do the curbing and the black... morning and there is no funding to restore the bike trail, so that's a big concern. Um, and uh, you know, we, we did allocate, we did a resolution the other day to do the curbing and the blacktop, you know, to restore that, for that, but there is no funding for the sidewalks to actually go to the actual restrooms in, in that area, so.
Wondering if that would be, I wonder if that would be eligible.
Cause that's a new, new project, that's, yeah, it's, it's a, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, and to, to Ken's point, I just, we had a, an emergency meeting with the Alternative Traffic Committee, no, is that what it's called?
Transportation Committee.
Transportation, I call it traffic, and they brought that up and, and we had Ken Tester on the phone and also coming out of the um, the memorial park that has the jets, I, I don't know what that's called, uh, you know where the jets are?
I think it's Grumman Memorial.
Grumman Memorial, so there's, there's a, the bike path there, which was when they laid, you know, when they laid the asphalt, it was like nothing and it's just all disappearing and, and they brought that up, what Ken is bringing up and also that piece.
Okay.
So.
I do think this grant is geared more towards um, playgrounds and community centers, but I can bring this information to Dawn and we can discuss it and I can get back to you really, really soon.
Also, we can look for other grants for these other opportunities also, which I know is on, definitely on your radar.
And I think that this initiative is a big thing um, for the state, I feel like each year is like a different theme and I think that this unplug and play is probably going to be um, extended. There's also a second round, so there's a $1 million first round and a $1 million second round, so.
But is that, does that pay out like yearly or something, like how, when do the grants issue, like once a year or?
Yeah, this is a reimbursement grant. So we would have to, yeah.
If, if those projects are gonna be, you know, if the town square is not, is gonna be a year away or something, then why, then why not do an imminent project right now such as?
Timing is tricky.
The bike trail, you know, or Waiting River Beach and that.
Yeah, I mean, to Ken's point, I mean, that, that's a year away, we have things that need and the rec department has like no, not enough money, you know this, better than anybody.
You're preaching as a choir.
Exactly.
But let me say how much we appreciate what you're doing and looking at this and that, that's great, I just like, want to look at the town as a whole.
Yeah, absolutely, and like I said, we had tried for the other project, um, so I'll take all this information to Dawn and we'll be in touch about it.
Thank you, thank you.
You bet.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding possible changes to chapters 217, demolition permits, chapter 269 shopping courts, and chapter 301 revocation of use permits with Hurley and Downs.
Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
How we doing?
We are doing.
How are you, that's the question.
Fantastic.
My shopping cart code comes back.
There you go, it just comes back. Uh, what do you want to start with, uh, building, construction, demolition permits?
Yeah, that's what we have up here for us.
Okay. Um, I provided the board just a quick, uh, little synopsis, a little overview on the amendments that we're proposing to do today, um, probably on the back pages. So, starting off with demolition permits, uh, so this amendment clarifies and strengthens the provisions governing demolition permits under chapter 217A and by distinguishing between ordinary demolition and demolition required for code violations while introducing timelines for both. So the key changes replaces the vague phrasing such as however, which is in the code with a more specific and professional language like in addition, uh, for better clarity and consistency. We got new requirements for utility disconnections, it adds the language for electrical and gas service disconnects, which may be required by the building inspector along with other uh, site safety measures like uh, needing of shoring of a building. We got a new section A for non-renew, non-renewable demolition permits unless approved by the building inspector. The work must commence when you apply for a building demolition permit within 45 days and shall be completed within one year. What we've been finding in some certain situations, especially after we issue code violations to certain places that have to apply for a demolition permit, is that the can kind of gets, the proverbial can gets kicked down the road and they just uh, renew the permit, so. In justice court, the application will be applied for, however, no work is being commenced and it could be a year and then they'll renew the permit, so we want to take that out. And that's where we're getting into section B violation based demolition permits, um, so it applies to demolition needed to remediate code violations. These permits are strictly non-renew, non-renewable and work must begin. This was a change, it's not 10 days, it's 45 days, so just to note that, uh, it's 45 days and completed within six months for violations associated with uh, justice court tickets, so, so. We did that because sometimes you'll need an electrical disconnect letter and in some cases, you're not going to get that within 10 days, so. All right, so the need for this amendment, pretty self-explanatory, um, it improves code enforcement, establishes enforceable timelines to prevent uh, abandon of prolonged demolition permits, uh, distinguishes permit types, sort of clarifies expectations based on whether demolition is voluntary or tied to a code violation. So you will have the original, those, those normal demolition permits, somebody's removing an in-ground pool, uh, it doesn't have violations, those are still um, gonna be handled a little differently. The timeline will be a year as opposed to six months, but you still have to get the work done, you know, commence work within 45 days.
Thank you.
I like that you're putting a timeline on this because, and I'm just gonna throw this on your radar, right, um, there is some building permits, Andreas told me, I don't know, about a month ago, somebody had one from 1979 and, you know, and it never, it doesn't get renewed, I mean, it's good that we keep a better track of these things.
Yep, and the last bold point, it supports administrative consistency, gives the building inspector clear authority and structure to enforce the rules. And so that's uh, that's our demolition permit amendment.
I wanted to say one more thing, I love the way you describe it, that you can spell it out.
That's all him, yeah.
I think that would be useful on, on changing code in general, so I, it helps me understand it better.
Yeah, gives you a little overview of why we're doing the change. And this did go through code revision and everybody was pretty much unanimously supportive.
Update us on the shopping carts.
Okay, shopping carts. All right, so again, we have that overview for you guys to, to look at. This amendment updates 269-2 and 269-6, security devices of chapter 269 shopping carts. The changes aim to enhance the clarity, enforceability, and practicality of existing requirements concerning anti-theft systems on shopping carts. So if you know, if you see the key changes to this, we added a new definition, 269-2, it introduces clear, modern definitions of acceptable anti-theft wheel braking mechanism systems. We did not have that before, so this is outlining what is an acceptable wheel braking mechanism system, okay? So that includes electromatic wheel locking, RFID-based systems, and smart cart GPS tracking systems. I think Mr. Kern did a lot of research on this, uh, when we did the law initially, so I'm sure you know what all of those terms, all those terms are. So this helps standardize what qualifies as compliant under our code. So, you know, um, we did this to try to um, be more specific, cause uh, there were shopping plazas that were just looking at systems that weren't really the correct type of systems, uh, so we want to be clear what we, what we're going to accept.
It's easier to prosecute the case in court, it's much easier for the court.
Yeah.
Yep.
I know you had an issue, I think it was with um, I, I don't know the place, it's over by the old Walmart, but with handicap, is there a provision in there where, you know, cause they said the handicap carts have those big poles with a flag on it and that's why they didn't want to do it? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so is there a provision in here where X amount or, you know, is a provision for handicap?
No, we didn't put any, we didn't touch anything with respect to ADA requirements in here.
Okay, so they were just trying to get away with not doing?
Well, we had certain, certain places that were, so as an example, their, their anti-theft mechanism was putting billiards at the door and not letting the public go out with the carts, so that kind of defeats the purpose of a shopping cart really, so, um, cause generally you want the cart to go out the door, you want, you want to put the stuff in your trunk of your car and then go, you know, leave the cart wherever it is at the cart return. So we had people that were just thinking that was their anti-theft mechanism, so. So that's not really what an anti-theft mechanism is and when we designed this code, uh, this is the key points that we had, you know, originally, that was our thought process, so, so we outlined that. We added a new exemption, however, in here because um, I felt and after we did extensive enforcement here, um, that there were those, you know, small mom and pop operations that, you know, liquor stores and whatnot that had uh, shopping carts, but they, we really didn't feel that they needed to put a whole anti-theft uh, mechanism system in their parking areas if they had 15 or fewer carts, so we added that to the, to the language of the code so that there's an exemption there for those small operations that only have 15 or fewer carts, so. And we figured that number would be, you know, an appropriate number.
So now you're saying when I go to King Cullen, they're only gonna have 15 carts for everybody?
Let's hope not. Let's hope not.
Shop break.
Yeah. Yeah, um, we, we found that there were some like, you know, True Value and, and the smaller, yeah, Town Edge and the smaller operations.
I agree, yes.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, certainly we can explore that number, I mean, we can even increase it if we feel 15 is just too, too few, I mean, we can increase it to 220 or 25 depending upon, you know, what we find out. We thought 15 was.
I think 15 is good because the guy on, that the, on West Main that has that supermarket, he was all for this, uh, cause his carts were getting stolen like crazy.
Oh, okay.
You know, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so the need for the amendment, obviously, again, self-explanatory, clearly defines acceptable systems, removing ambiguity for businesses and town enforcement staff, addresses cart abandonment and blight, and provides reasonable flexibility for the small business owners, so. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, good job. Yep, thank you. Next, we have a proposed amendment to revocation of use permits. Okay, so just so you know, this did go to code revision, we did speak to um, Dawn Thomas about this and we also spoke to the zoning officer, Greg Bergman, um, and so they both reviewed this, um.
What about the building inspector?
Building.
Yeah, Andreas, did you talk to him about this?
He was sent a copy of this, yes, he was, and he's in code revision, so. All right, so.
Did he weigh in on this?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if he.
I would like him too, because it seems like if he gives a building permit, the zoning officer can pull that building permit, am I reading this correctly?
Well, no, the zoning officer is Greg Bergman.
Right, no, I understand, I'm saying, I'm sorry, if the building is back there.
Greg Bergman doesn't issue building permits.
No, this is a use permit, yeah.
So it appears as though that, I just kind of.
A use permit is separate and distinct from a building permit, so a use permit is somebody, giving somebody authorization to use a building for whatever that reason might be, maybe it's a matter of right use or maybe it's not, maybe it needs to go to Zoning Board Appeals, but.
Oh, I, I get it, okay.
That's what a use permit is, it's not, it's not a building permit.
I think though, did you discuss this at all, I mean, I've only been with the Business Advisory Committee since January, but have they, have you presented this to them at all to kind of look over? Now that they've typically commented on some of the uh, building codes, questions, permits and so forth.
Not to my knowledge, we didn't discuss anything with the Business Advisory Committee with respect to this amendment, so, I mean, like I said, we, we presented to the Code Division Committee, they reviewed it, we circulated it to Dawn and Andreas and Greg and we had no opposition.
I think we'd be, I mean, things like this would normally go through the Business Advisory Committee?
Not normally, no.
No. I always thought it would.
For a use permit?
Well, just to look at it, just to, you know, look at it.
Well, I mean.
Okay.
Well, generally, we don't, we don't supply the Business Advisory Committee with code revisions, I mean, the public, we do, we do it during a work session, I mean, it's gonna go to a town board meeting, obviously, and can be, you know, anybody can comment on it at that point. But without getting into weeds, let's, let's go over why we did it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so um, this amendment allows the zoning officer, okay, uh, the authority to revoke use permits and establish a formal appeals process for a use permit. It empowers the zoning officer to revoke a use permit when the actual use of the premises deviates from the approved application, so in other words, if somebody says they're going into a building to do uh, an office use or something like that and that deviates from that particular type of use into something else or morphs into something that the permit was issued for, this gives the, the ability to revoke that permit based off of what's really happening inside the building, so that is really the crutch, the crutch of this.
Yeah, my answer to your question, so if, let's just say it's a commercial space, it's 2,000 square feet and it's a paint store, the paint store goes out and he's.
Hypotheticals.
What?
No, go ahead.
And then, and then, and he's adds, he's selling paint and he goes, you know what, I'm gonna sell tile too.
Still retail sales, that's okay.
Okay, that's where I'm going, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's different, yeah.
If he turns it into an apartment, then.
Yeah, if he's turning it into a used, it's not a matter of right use per se.
Okay, got it.
Then, uh, that's a different, different situation.
I think that what you're trying to say is that right now, we don't have anything in place.
We don't.
If we have that kind of situation happen.
Right, correct, so.
Wow.
This expands on that. Um, so uh, if the current use contradicts, we can revoke, um, we have to provide written notification to the permit holder before we do that and the use must cease within reasonable timeframe as determined, as determined by the zoning officer at the time. Non-compliant subjects of the property to enforce, uh, we will enforce um, through the town code, through this section, um, and section M is, establishes a clear and fair process for the applicants to challenge the revocation, uh, the right to appeal to the zoning board of appeals within 30 days of receiving the revocation notice, um, that's outlined in uh, an article 78 proceeding, home rule, um, that requires written submission detailing reasons for the appeal, um, and the zoning board must hold a public hearing within 45 days. So again, the need for the amendment, I, I kind of explained that, it provides a mechanism for the town to respond when a property use no longer aligns with the permitted, except, uh, approvals that they were issued, so. Improves regulatory oversight, helps prevent misuse or abuse of use permits, ensures procedural fairness, applicants are granted a structural appeals process including a hearing and the right for judicial review, and promotes consistency and transparency in zoning enforcement practices.
So I do want to say if there are advisory committees that want to weigh in on this, this is just our first presentation to the board, it's, we don't typically refer. We don't typically refer them out unless the board requests that we refer them out, and if there are advisory committees that want to weigh in, they can contact themselves or Rich. This is just us putting it out there to you guys for an opening session and seeking approval to put in a published post to hold the public hearing where we'll take in more comments.
I'm very glad that you're doing this because I don't like that there's been so many gray areas in the past, and I saw that during the comprehensive plan where we were able to kind of narrow in on different things and say, you know, we need a clear definition of exactly what the process is, it protects the town in the long run, and I appreciate you guys doing the work that you've been doing on this, so thank you.
Any further questions? Well, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding Riverhead in Action Video regarding a historic house in the town.
Matters surrounding, so these are houses around the house that you've told me about? Is this the house next door to the one?
Hi, this is Tim Hubbard, supervisor of the great town of Riverhead, and you're watching Riverhead in Action, a media campaign designed to highlight the incredible work of the 350-plus employees. They comprise Riverhead's 26 departments and sub-departments, town events, projects, job openings, local businesses, and other town happenings. I hope you find this informative and enjoyable, and thank you for watching Riverhead in Action.
Hello, I'm Councilwoman Jill Anwoski, and welcome to an edition of Riverhead in Action. Today, we are at a historical spot on Griffin Avenue. I'm joined today by Richard Wines and Cliff Polczek. Cliff is the owner, and we also have Richard Wines again, who is...
I'm chair of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
There's so much history here in Riverhead, and I'm so excited to show everybody this house dated back to when, Cliff?
1870.
Charles Howlett came to Riverhead in 1856, and how soon after that he built this house, we're not quite sure. Howlett, starting out as a carpenter, came here and bought several mills, but the mill he was most famous for was a mill that made building parts. It made moldings, columns, pillows, cheddars, windows, and things like that. It was called a planing and sash mill. Looking at the outside of this house, if you look up above, upstairs there, you're seeing all kinds of things that he could have made, all the brackets under the eaves, for instance.
Wow, look at that.
And look at the fancy moldings, that dentil work above the window on the second floor there, and you'll see it again above the window here, or look at the porch, these wonderful little brackets here on the porch, around the doorway, and you see the fancy moldings around the door. These are all the kinds of things that he would have made in his mill. What we have here is the Downtown Riverhead Historic Trail, and this is a QR code-enabled trail, and you can go all around Downtown Riverhead and you'll see codes like this. And you click on that code and someone is going to tell you about the history of this house.
So, why don't we all go inside, step back in time, and see the inside of this historic home?
I welcome you in.
Let's go for a tour.
Yeah, so why don't we go up to this room back here, which I think is really the most interesting. I'm suspecting that this was probably Charles Howlett's favorite room, most likely his office, where he might have run some of his businesses out of here, but you look around, look at this woodwork, all this incredible woodwork, these, these wide moldings, just think of them all being made here in Riverhead. It's the typical Victorian period fireplace you'd see from 1860, 1870, 1880, right from the period.
Incredible, and that's original glass?
Yeah, oh, yes. You could not get glass like that today, that would be, or if you did, it would probably cost more than the house is worth, right?
Additional sliding pocket door there.
Another pocket door there.
This would have been an addition to the original house because when you look in this walkway, this, the old siding is there. Look at the size of this door, and it's only a closet.
So, this is my other favorite room in the house. Again, you're seeing a lot of original detail here, the same kind of ceiling boards, similar moldings around the doorways. Do you know if these lights are original, Cliff?
I believe they are.
We know the story of this building is that it was supposedly the first building in Riverhead to get electric lights.
This was previously the front parlor to the house. We decided there had to be more space. I didn't want it to look like a new addition, so everything that was done, I tried to recreate as close to the original building and the large office in the back as I could, which included having all the moldings recreated, the woodwork, everything that was possible that would look like the original building is what I tried to keep.
So, what was this originally? It was plaster, is that what you said?
Yes, this would have all just been plaster walls up in this parlor.
And this is the original door?
Yep, this would have been, this is the original door with a staircase on the other side that the original owners would have used to go upstairs to their beds.
Well, I thank you so much for inviting us in today. It's been wonderful exploring your historic home.
That's, I did the best to keep this house as original as possible because it's so important being the first house to have electricity in Riverhead.
Wow, that is great.
Very nice, John, very nice. I have to say, looking at that molding from that time period compared to what they make today, and back then, they didn't have the tools or the equipment or anything.
That's what we were discussing.
It was hand carved and everything else. You couldn't afford to have that done today.
No, to see it in person is just beautiful, it's spectacular.
It reminds me, the inside with all the dark wood and all the molding and everything, inside Plassey Street School in the front lobby there, reminds me of that, too, and that was built in the 1900s, but incredible, the work that they did back in the day.
I just want to give a special thank you to Richard Wines and Cliff Polczek. Thank you for your time that day. It was a very enjoyable afternoon.
Very good. All right, next up, we have matters surrounding Riverhead in Action Video, a quarter one recap.
Hi, this is Tim Hubbard, supervisor of the great town of Riverhead, and you're watching Riverhead in Action, a media campaign designed to highlight the incredible work of the 350-plus employees. They comprise Riverhead's 26 departments and sub-departments, town events, projects, job openings, local businesses, and other town happenings. I hope you find this informative and enjoyable, and thank you for watching Riverhead in Action.
Hi, this is Tim Hubbard. Okay, that was just a brief highlight of our first quarter of this year. As we continue on, we will have much more to show and present to you, and I want to thank my chief of staff and my deputy supervisor and Mr. Justin in the back for all the work that goes into this, and I think we all kind of have fun doing it and we always learn something with each one we do, so it's interesting and we will keep them up and we get a lot of good compliments on them from people in the public, so thank you all so much. One quick announcement here, just a reminder that the water district is going to be flushing the lines for the next three weeks, and as we've all known this from in the past, if you turn your water on and it's coming out brown or rusty looking, just turn the cold faucet on and let it run until it comes out clear. Sometimes it takes a couple of tries, but don't do your wash as I've done in the past, especially whites if you have brown water because obviously your whites become brown. So, just run it to clear it out, and it's going to take place over the next three weeks townwide, so remember that if it comes up to your house and happens, run them and flush them. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to close executive session in a moment, close open session and go into executive session to discuss matters surrounding contractual agreement for recycling. That'll be with Rothwell, Dillingham, Clifford, Prudente, and Baldonucci. We have matters surrounding contractual agreement for police services with Waskey. We have matters surrounding license and agreement for racetrack knot street with Rothwell, and we have matters surrounding possible sale of real property with Kern. So, if I could have a motion to close open session and go into executive?
Absolutely. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Open session is closed and we will be going into executive session. Everybody have a wonderful weekend and we'll see you next week.